All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order at 6:03 PM. And we've got everybody here. And we do eliminate. Take motion to the Senate.
Second down.
I wasn't here. Any discussion? Call of favor. Announcements, deadline for 2025 dog registration is January 31st. Late registrations are subject to a $25 penalty. So, we're gonna move to public comment, and I wanna give everybody the heads up. There's a three-minute maximum, just so you know. And... Once I get it off, I'll make sure that I have it on. Um... Say... All right, do we have any public comments? Nobody?
Well, I will, I guess.
All right, I'm gonna start the time.
Some may like what I'm gonna say, some may not, some may not know what I'm gonna say. You all know, know part of this. I was terminated in the fire department back in July. And this has been eating at me since then. I've been told to go to legal counsel, and I don't wanna do that. I, uh... Wrote you guys all a letter. This is gonna go into some budget things, too. And I wanted an investigation of why I was fired. I was terminated wrongly. It was over part of an OSHA call on chimney fire in Bradford, but they told him to fire a fighter down. Put a belt on the ladder, Scott, he refused, okay? That's part of it, I'm not gonna put a detail in what you want me to do. I was terminated, I wrote you guys a letter, I wanted an investigation made. It came back... A few weeks later, by somebody, I'm not gonna name the person, that called me... This in this room. And, uh, he said, or they said... That they can't do anything with investigations because we're volunteer fire department. And they're run by an association. So, the town officers don't have any control over how that fire department's run. I disagree. That's a municipal fire department. When Scott was chief, I was treasurer back a while, and I had to sign a letter that went to the state. Releasing volunteer, going to municipal. And that was due to being paid hourly through the fire department calls. But anyway... Saying that the town officers don't have any control, yes, you do have control of how this runs. The townspeople are paid, are not paid, are collecting their taxes for a budget. I don't know what that budget's gonna be this year, but they collect town money around the fire department. You guys have to, uh, record for that and account for that. So you guys have the availability to say what goes on up there. So... That's basically what I gotta say. I mean, I don't wanna go to legal counsel, but we can solve this. You know, I was told that I'm no longer allowed in that building, I'm no longer allowed on that property. I've been on that town 21 years. I changed my schedule to serve this town. Over a couple minor things that... Yeah. Did I wanna call OSHA? I did. You know, that's not right how I was fired. You're not an officer, you shouldn't have been in charge of that call. I was a senior person there. When the fire chief of Charleston and the assistant showed up, they took the ball away. Someone refused to go up a ladder without a belt. That's an OSHA violation and a policy. To refuse to put Scott on, that is OSHA and a policy. You know, the other thing he refused is mine.
Your time is up.
You know, it's up.
Um... I will say, your appeal on that termination, it's through the board of the fire department. Um... We did check into it, and we did look into it, but your appeal is through the board of that fire department. You have to go to that board and appeal it.
But for someone to say that you guys don't have any control, that's wrong. You're cutting town money. Course you guys do. I think you guys are gonna escape that law. And that is a municipal department now.
In this situation, your appeal is through your board at the fire department. So, do we have anybody else with public comments?
I've been asking, join three other towns, two board of us one.
Your time is up, I'm sorry. Anybody else?
I have a question. So, um, with this whole EMS thing going on, with all the words and posts being on the options that are out there... Um, as a, you know, town member, I'm concerned that... So, these options are being put there, and there's not necessarily the support behind them that there will be people to do the work at those options, posts. So, I'm just, like, my question is, how is it an option if there's not the backing behind it for people to actually do the job for that? Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Like, that's kind of a false option.
As a board, what we have to do, we have to put forth the option that works best. Um, as with anything on the board, we negotiate employee wages. And... That's where it lies. Absolutely.
And we did ask the EMS crew for a survey, or for them to do a poll, and that was brought to us last night. So, we just got the information last night.
Night before last, wasn't it?
Oh, night before last, right, sorry, it's all been today.
Yeah, and I was here, and I did hear that survey.
And we had asked for that, and we'd asked for that a while back ago, and they, they said they had it up four days, and they brought it back. So... That is an issue for us, because no matter what option we give, if, if our EMS won't or cannot, right? And we'll get into that, because there was, um... With the limited data we have, we only have two months of data. Whether we really have seven full-time employees, and if it, if we have 80% workload coverage, how many people is covering that? So that's a huge concern for us.
Right, well, that's why I have a question, because if we can't have it, because there are not the people to cover it, then it's not really enough.
We have 10 people on the roster that are providers, and three drivers at the moment. That's who's been doing it the last two months. So, yeah, you're right. If, if people say we won't do it, then we're back to our original option of Northern Light's gonna cover us.
Then they can.
So, that's, that's where we're going to.
Jeff?
Uh, I don't know what it entails to be EMTB and A and paramedic, I'm sure a fair amount of training involved. Why are you paying the driver of the ambulance for any box when the fire department only gets minimum wage?
Well, the newest option that we proposed, that Roseanne, um, and the board proposed, Roseanne did the heavy lifting on it, um, proposed on Tuesday night was pay them at their rate. Whatever their qualifications were, we would pay them at their rate on a call. So the driver would be paid at their rate, and the, the paramedic, or advanced paramedic, or basic, they would be paid at their rate. So... Roseanne, did you wanna...
We're not there yet.
I know, but we're there.
We're gonna skip right through that.
So...
So, does it take more qualifications to drive the ambulance than does the fire truck?
I don't know.
Well, can I add something to that?
Just a second. Um... This was the proposal that we had. Um... And that was, in, in the many hours of negotiations, or whatever you'd like to call them, this was one of the things that they found to be a fair price. Um, we are trying to move to the middle, we're trying to make something happen so that this works. Um... I guess that would be my only answer. I don't, I don't know that it takes more qualifications, all I know is that this is what the number was arrived at when we took in everything that, the input that we got.
A driver's very important, and a driver doesn't get the credit they deserve.
Does anybody else have any public comments?
Can I, can I add to that for you?
Can I speak on that, in favor of that?
Let these other people talk first, Tony, then we can talk. So... Jeff's absolutely right, and Jen's absolutely right. One of the things we looked at when we started looking at the pay scales is we realized there's disparity between what the firefighters are paid and what the EMS providers are paid. And I'm not gonna necessarily say it's more or less qualifications, but to drive an ambulance, besides having the courses, an EVOT course, that certification, you also do need a license from the state of Maine. So, you will see in our pay scale that that's taken into account, but I think one of the things that you guys might not have the data about is we do have a pay scale for firefighters as well, that they're incorporated into this. So, can you be a firefighter, and can you be an EMT, and can you be compensated for that? Sure. But obviously, that being said, too, our firefighters may receive a less rate where that is what their qualification is. But we did, as we were going through our pay scale, we determined that, yeah, there are some disparities. And we're hoping, you know, going forward, we'd be able to negotiate and get that while, so Casey doesn't lose her mind when she's doing payroll number one, but number two, so it's fair to everybody.
Yeah, we really need to address that part, 'cause I think she's doing a lot of that that I'm not seeing you're getting paid for. That's what I thought, all right, that's, then we're correct on that, yes.
A driver's not just a driver, drivers are a very important part of that ambulance.
And we understand that.
And they are responsible for a lot more than driving.
Oh, I understand that.
Because they can help the EMT under their, I'm a visa.
Did you have...
Yes, what's this gonna do to the mill rate?
The newest option that we came up with, that we feel is middle of the road, um, is, uh, we think less than one, or just about one mill.
That's the one we're looking at here. Okay. But is that the, okay, is that for the full-time EMS, or is it...
That, let's, um, you wanna address that now, because I think that's mostly where our public...
I'm okay with it.
If you're okay with that?
Is that the whole budget, or just the EMS part that go on?
The, uh...
You know the roads and everything else?
That's the...
Just, just for the record, I saw a public comment, too, so, when, when you're ready.
So you guys all have this with a, with a beautiful graph on that. All right, that's what she's gonna address, this is our newest, um, what we came up, what we spent, she spent most time, but we all spent pretty much time trying to come up with something that worked to address both sides of this. Because we have some people that are worried if we don't have our guys and girls here 24/7. We have some people that are worried about the taxes going up, there's some people that are worried about both. So we thought this was an option that would address those problems.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give history, most of you probably know it, but I'm just gonna, I'm gonna review, okay? So you can see where we got to this. So in September, Northern Light removed their ambulance from our, um, car department, and then they discontinued, and discontinued their contract with us, which is they provided one... They provided one provider, and we did, and we provided a driver. And then in the evening, they provided both, or were supposed to. In the beginning of work, in the end, it wasn't doing so great, and our people were covering. In the month leading up to it, we were struggling, I just said that. Um, Northern Light still provided primary coverage in our town until we, uh, we came up with something in November. The select board asked the fire department if they had any suggestions for coverage, and the plan was proposed that we had been, um, voted on on October 22nd at special town meeting, which was 24/7 coverage, and our town scheduled, our department scheduled to be working one. We said at that meeting that we would, in that time, research the data and try to come up with alternative plans for the March meeting. Unfortunately, we have to start planning for the budget now, actually back in, um, December. First of December. So, with that being said, we had little data to go on, but we pulled together November and December's data and looked at it to see what we could see was happening right now. It's limited data, the data's skewed, there's a variant, because the hours that are worked, um, that we have do not equal the 24/7 hours for November and December.
We can ask Casey about that, too, 'cause she's here.
Well, I don't wanna put her on the spot, but I...
There's gonna be discrepancies there, because the full-time firefighters that are coming from Orono, Old Town, Bangor, they're putting in eight hours rather than the full 12 hours. So that's where those discrepancies are gonna come from, or if there was open shifts, then those ones are gonna be left blank as well.
But even if they're working eight hours, somebody else should be picking up the other four hours, is that correct? Are you leaving the four hours empty?
It, he's doing it.
That's me.
So that's you, so, oh, that was on call, that's during the day.
You just won't see that on that payroll, that's where the discrepancy would be.
So the only thing I would ask for getting clearer data is if we could, you could put down your time and put it down as unbilled, unbillable time, 'cause then that way we can see who's working that time. 'Cause that's, 'cause one month I had 41.5 hours that weren't covered, and the other month it was 73. So it's like, it makes it look like there's nothing.
Four days also.
Yeah, right. It just, but it makes a stop, it makes a stopgap when you're trying to gather that data.
Gotcha.
I appreciate it. Um... So we came in with the fill-in-the-gap plan, which is what's been in place since November 1st. We said to the town that we would look at the information and see what we could come up with. It's been a struggle, um, there is no easy thing. So we've been researching and talking to other towns, um, I've been looking at national ones, and so I gathered the data. You have a packet, one, I can't hold it. I'm nervous, I got it right here. If you read the power letter, it pretty much explains, I don't know whether there was a misunderstanding or just not acknowledging, didn't understand, that, um... When I went and looked at the Fair Labor Standard Act on on-call, engaged versus non, uh, engaged to wait or waiting to be engaged, I found that we are using the waiting, uh, yeah, make sure I get this right, engaged to wait model and not the waiting to be engaged. That right there could help us, help the town, not necessarily our providers, but we, we are, in case, we are following the waiting to engage, and we are not, and it's non-restricted conditions, which if you go, and I put the, if you, any of you who are interested in the blue is the number, or the, uh, Fair Labor Standards Act. So in realizing that, that we're paying for on-call time that's non-restricted, that was a, a big, um, gap that we found. And if you look at November's, um, the blue is the on-call time. It says November 2, 2024, on-call versus runtime. The blue is the on-call, non-restricted on-call time, and what was paid, that was 89% of the time. And the yellow piece of pie is 11%. And that is, um, which equals 146 hours. The blue, 89%, if you see it down here, it was 1,250.5. And over here on the side is where I have all my, um, numbers, and where I talk about that, that's, uh, 41.5 hours not included.
hers is yellow, but ours is orange. Or she's seeing yellow.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing orange, you guys are seeing yellow apparently.
No, you said yellow.
That's why, I'm just, I'm just...
Sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean...
I'm nervous, this is not my forte. If you look at December, where the trending is impeccable, because we're only off by 1%. Um, again, it was 90% blue and 10% orange, and the, uh, the hours per 10% was 145, and 90 was 1,270. So we're trending, but again, it's only two months' worth of data. Um, and I gave you all the numbers on the side to pull along with that. So, we don't want to, we want to still recognize that we value the time of the people who are willing to serve our community. So we, we're trying to find a way, and it doesn't sound like much, but if we could ask for a $50 stipend for each scheduled hour of just being on-call, so you'd get $50 for the 12-hour shift. Because the law, there is no main state law, if you use the main state law, there isn't one. And when you read the federal, they give an example of, the basically is, if the person can go and do, go about their normal day and, and be productive in their personal life, then it's considered, um, non-working hours.
So what you're saying is pay a $50 stipend for the day instead of the EMTB 23.50 an hour?
No, no, no.
Do 23 an hour, 50.
It's currently, we're paying $15 an hour for being on-call. So they get paid $15 an hour for being on-call, but that's engaged to wait, and we are not asking them to engage to wait. They can go about their day as long as they stay 15 minutes, within 15 minutes of the fire department. So, now, with this model, instead of getting $15 an hour, they would get $50 for the 12-hour schedule.
Like what I said, 50 for the day, instead of that 23 an hour?
No, sir.
So they're gonna get 50 a day plus the 23 and 50 an hour?
You need to listen to me, you're not letting me finish my thought, okay? So then, to value their skills, talents, and abilities, when they are on a run, that is when they would get paid the rate for their credentials. So that 10% of the time that they're actually in an ambulance, they would get what they are...
Well, that's just what I said. You're getting 50 a day, but when you do a call, you get 23.50.
When you're actually on a run, correct.
Oh, 23.50.
So while you're sitting at home, you're not getting paid for that.
You're getting the $50 stipend.
Right, that's what I said, immediately.
Okay, that's not how it sounded, it sounded like...
Yeah, you get 50 for the shift.
Tony, you're very confused.
No, you're gonna pick, there's another town that does this, three, four times over. You get 50 for the shift, and then when you get a call, your time starts when the page goes out.
Correct. And that's what it says in this, we read through. Hopefully I got it clear. So, using the numbers that we had available to us, we then tried to look at what it would look like. And then we got your green and your, I don't know if yours is, yours is green. So this would be an example of if we did the $50 stipend and paying an on-call pay. For example, we said two paramedics, 24/7. So if two paramedics signed up for the schedule, one would be the driver, and one would be in the back of the bus. Um, and we paid for 30 days, 24 hours, times two staff, that gives you the 1,440, um, for 24/7. So $50 a 12-hour shift times four people, and then if they got on-call, they would get their, their rate. So, for the on-call time, so I, we did, I just said 30 days, it would be like November. They would get paid approximately, and this includes, uh, social security, workers comp, and main state, the, uh, the, the new, lovely new tax we got. Um, it would be $7,124.97. And for the, uh, runtime, the 11%, it would be $6,412.53. So it balances out, at, at, out a little bit financially. Now, I know this doesn't make the providers happy about the $50, but if, we weren't following the right guideline. And that falls on us, the select board, for not being aware of that at the time we put that proposal out to the town, that falls on us. And then again, for the 31 days, same scenario. The call time is 7,000, $7,362.47, and the runtime is 6,626.24. If you have any questions, feel free to ask, I'm ready, I may just take you a minute to explain it.
Now, I, uh, how's this compared, you described that, and just what was Northern Light, what's up, is receivables, what are all...
Currently, Northern Light said that they, for this year, for 2025, Northern Light will not charge us, um, per capita. It's just gonna be as it was. Now, come next year, they could say, oh, here's your bill, and this is what you're gonna have to pay us per capita. The other concern that has been brought to us is that they technically, I haven't heard it happen yet, or I'm just not aware, let's put it that way, I'm not aware, that they can do a 30-day letter and drop, drop them. But yes, we could use them, and it would be at no cost, but the concern was, we heard from our citizens, was they want a 24/7 coverage. Citizens want to know that somebody's gonna come when they call and not have to worry about Northern Light only having two ambulances in the area, and will they be able to come? So that's the reason we're trying to stick with a 24/7.
Right, the only problem I have is, as this goes, each year it goes, it's gonna go up, and up, and up, and up.
Uh, we're trying to find...
So, that's the problem, you know?
Oh, I, I understand, that's what we've been, and that was, that is one of the six options that we have, is we just go with what we know, and... But we were hearing a concern from the community that they wanted a 24/7 coverage, the certainty that somebody would come when they called. So, and that's the other reason that we said that the citizens at the meeting said, you know, is, is the ambulance gonna leave town? We said, no, this is just gonna be a con. So, the, this is just an option, the town still has to vote on it, it's just, this is after going over all the options and trying to find something that's reliable, sustainable, and affordable, we're trying to find something that...
I understand that, but I can tell you right now, the EMS, the budget's gonna, it's gonna explode. That I can tell you.
Well, and we've also gotta worry about, you know, the question we had the other night is, we have 10 people on the roster, is it sustainable? And this is just a short-term, a short-term solution, you know, the long-term is we have a committee that's looking at regionalization. I don't know if that's the answer either, because that will, that could triple everything.
10 people gonna be burnt out, or...
Yeah.
I can tell you.
Well...
And they fired one, could've been all of them.
Um, did you finish? Sorry.
Yeah.
Jane, you had a...
Yeah, so, I'll, I'll, I'll just say respectfully, Roseanne, I disagree with you about the, uh, we're not restricted when we're scheduled to work on the ambulance. Um, I can't leave town, I can't go out to dinner, because I'll probably risk by losing my meal if I, if I do. Um, I can't go to a movie, I can't go to a ballgame anywhere here in town, right? You're, you're limited, you're limited in what you can do, so I would respectfully disagree that we're not restricted when we're, when we're there. Um, I've been, I think I've been really, really clear every time I've come to the select board meeting, and when we talked about the option of paying us $15 an hour, uh, while we're waiting for a call, and we described that as the cost of readiness, um, and $20 when we actually go on a call, that was the band-aid, right? For us, that, that's the middle-of-the-road piece right there for us, right? Most EMS clinicians, there's a staffing shortage across the country for EMS clinicians. Any one of us, all, all of, all of us that are doing it right now, we're doing it because this is where we live, right? For no other reason than that, right? 'Cause we can make twice as much money and go work somewhere else. Yeah, I'll have to go work there, I'll have to, have to stay there, or work 12-hour shifts and be there during the day, or work overnight shifts. And they might be busier, they might not be busier, right? 'Cause there are towns in the state of Maine that have the same call volume as, as us, and they have, they have very, very large budgets. Um, and they're the same size community, right? Um, so that, that piece is, is, that is the middle of the road.
Who, 'cause we couldn't find anybody, we tried.
I'll tell you what, I'll tell you what, when I collected, when I collected all the, all the budgets for the entire state of Maine when they applied for stabilization funding, I'll send you as many as you want. I don't have them here in front of me, but I'll send you as many as you want.
That would be great, because we literally tried to find anybody that paid in the model that we're paying.
in the model that we're paying right now in the same size with the same cap base, and we couldn't find any.
I'll, I'll send you some.
Okay.
So, the challenge with paying us four dollars and sixteen cents an hour, four seventeen an hour, when we're, when we're on call and waiting is not many people are gonna do it, right? So unfortunately, there was some misinformation shared the other night when, when I got up and went on a call while the budget committee was going on. When we did that poll, a one was described to us as not willing. And a five was very willing. And then, that was described here that night as there was no hard nose, and there was opportunity to provide comment. So when you guys saw ones on there, tho- those were described to everybody as not willing. Not, not a little willing. So, keep that, keep that in the back of your mind when you're, when you're considering what to put to the town people to vote in, in March.
So when I say a stipend, you can't look at that as hourly pay. The stipend is a-
Look at it however I want.
You can, sir. Um, it's, it's on our part, we're going by the, the federal law. We're going by the federal law, and we looked at our state law. And they give examples.
There is no state, there is no state law.
There is no state law.
Right.
So we have to go by the federal law.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
And I, and I, like I said, I respectfully disagree with you. We are restricted when we are waiting.
But if, if the Department of Labor is, is using this example for us as non-restricted conditions enabling employees to use time efficiently for their own personal use while on call. For example, a nurse may be required to carry a cellphone and return to the employer's premises within thirty minutes after being called. But the nurse is free to sleep, visit with friends, or go shopping. This is considered non-restricted conditions. In most non-restricted conditions, it is time an employee can use effectively for their own personal use and therefore is not considered hours worked. I respect you as skilled professionals. I value your time. But when I'm bringing this before the people of the town, I have to look at what the law is and what is reasonable and sustainable. I'm not trying to insult you at all. I'm not purposely trying to insult any of the people, because I appreciate them being here. I'm looking at the law and saying, what is allowed? What is considered fair? If our, you know, we follow rules all the time with our government. And so that's what I'm using as the standard. And you, even if you weren't considered non-restricted, you're on call. So if you're restricted and working at a fire department in Brewer, Bangor, Old Town, Orno, you cannot go do anything, you have to be there. You can play checkers, you can talk to your friends, but you, you have to be there. That's engaged to wait. We're asking you to be willing to engage. We appreciate that you wanna serve our town. But if, if, if you all say, no, we're not gonna do it, which is unfavorable, then we have to look at our other options, and we have to know that. And that's the reason we asked for a poll. Are you, are you going to be willing to do this and work with us to provide an in-town ambulance? If the case is no, then we know what has to be put on the warrant, and, and that would be hire out or, um, go with Northern Light? That's the issue, that's, this is what we're trying to get to the crux of, is what can we do? And if the, the, if our EMS department is saying no, then that makes it easy, because we'll know what route to take. Um, that, I can only have my three minutes, so. But I, I just, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to show where we're coming from. We're not doing it to, uh, delittle the rate. We're doing it by a statute and a law.
Yeah.
All right, Stuart, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna answer your question, Bob, okay? You heard the word zero, now with Roseanne's plan, which gives us coverage, it's gonna, the, the fire and EMS together, which they're basically together, is four hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
Thousand, thousand.
Uh, four ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. Okay?
Right now.
The way it goes right now, the combined budget would be six hundred and seventy thousand and seventy, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Now, we always had a five-pound budget, but we gotta hook them together, because they, they come, they, they come out of one pot of money.
I agree with that, you, you definitely have to hook them together.
So I mean, you're looking at, and just for instance, this budget would be more than Combs and, and Levance put together.
Right.
For the combined. Wait, so I, I'm just saying, but we, you, you're looking at big numbers, six hundred and seventy thousand, three quarters, nearly three quarters of a dollar.
I know towns open up a can of worms, I don't know if they want it out. I just think it's gonna be a nightmare, I think it'd be better off outsourced than-
But you, you asked a question, what's it gonna cost me? That, that's Roseanne, which is, that was, that was a compromise of four ninety-seven.
It's gonna be ongoing, never-ending. There'll be more money, more money, more money. You know, I can tell you right now, ten people will be burned out. Then they, then they won't do it, then where you gonna be? That's the problem. I realize, you know, Northern Light might do it first year free, but I mean, we're gonna pay, I know, at one point, we're gonna pay, because this EMS is gonna be, I just think we're all gonna be paying for the-
It's probably everywhere.
Even if you pay per capita, I think it's gonna be cheaper, isn't it?
Matt, do you have a- My, sorry, hand over here, sorry.
Oh, you did?
I thought, maybe not, maybe it's just my- Oh, with the ring here, fine.
On the, in the free paper the other day, I was reading about Milo's thing. And Northern Light will do them for seventeen dollars per capita.
And that's what they are doing-
That's a lot cheaper than-
Condeske and Glenburn for two of them.
We got three thousand people, John, if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, so that's fifty thousand bucks instead of three hundred and something.
Well, we were trying to also listen to the people that said they wanted twenty-four seven coverage in our town. That's what we're trying to find the compromise.
We had to vote, and there was a hundred and twenty people there, and eighty of them voted for it. So, that's not the majority of the town.
Majority that voted, yeah.
Majority that voted, yeah.
And John, that was four hundred and ninety-seven, not three hundred and something.
Yeah.
That was cheap.
So what I'm, I'm hearing right now is, we have people that are saying stick with Northern Light or try and try it.
You're gonna drive us out of town with the taxes.
People can't afford it.
That's the problem, people want a fixed income, and everybody's getting older.
I know, they would sold the house, it all because of this.
It doesn't, I mean, I realize too, we have a lot of trail packs in town, which, that, that really, I hate to say it, but it does hurt us, our revenue coming in. You know what I'm saying? So, I mean, in every town deals with that, I realize that, but still, it's revenue.
We have roughly three thousand people, we send out eighteen hundred tax bills to thirteen hundred people. So thirteen hundred people, thank you, Brent, Mark.
Thirteen hundred, you mean?
We're, we're paying that level.
And then at that, you don't pay the taxes, and you're chasing that money.
Well, then, then, if you put too much, you're gonna have more people ain't paying you, we chase a lot more money.
That's the problem.
It's a, it's a, it's a circle.
I mean-
So Jason, are you telling us that the department, the EMS providers in this town do not want to go with an option we put out?
I'll speak for myself. For, for fifty bucks a shift, I'm, I'm probably more interested in spending time with my family and, and, and doing things rather than being woken up at midnight to go out in all sorts of weather and-
Just concern, my concern is that we've been asking the department to bring us back an option, they've never come back and said what they really want, other than the petition that you have out.
Well, that's, that's absolutely not true. We've told you that the three hundred and sixty-six thousand was, was the Band-Aid to get us through till we can complete the strategic planning. We've, we've come here, we've told you that.
That you wouldn't take anything but the one that you could-
We never said, no, we wouldn't take anything but it, but that's what we told you was that, we told you that's not a recruitment rate, that's not a retention rate. Paying, paying people fifteen bucks an hour to be on call, quite honestly, you can make more anywhere, go and work at McDonald's, go work at Wendy's.
That's a choice, that's what you want to do.
It's absolutely a choice, absolutely a choice.
I think we need to be considerate of everybody in town, not just EMS workers, or this department, that department, everybody.
That's okay, yeah.
People cannot continue, keep going up, and like the budget committee worked with us, and they look like this plan that Roseanne is going up. And it's not like buying a fire station, or building a fire station, it's gonna be continuous, like he just said, he said the same thing. It's gonna continue on and on and on, and it's just gonna be-
Did I misunderstand? Because I thought the biggest problem was the twenty-four seven. That we, I thought the biggest problem was you guys didn't want Mayo involved. I thought that was the big problem.
So, Mayo, Mayo left town. Mayo left town, right?
They, they left the building.
They left the building, they left the building, right. They took, they took their ambulance, and they took it back to Dover, and they didn't staff it. So they have three ambulance crews on, and they do five thousand calls a year.
So, that's what I'm asking, is that, that wasn't the big problem? You guys didn't want them involved, and that wasn't the problem? That's my question.
Mayo's not here, they're not, they haven't offered to come back.
And they have responded, and, but two weeks ago, they responded. That, you know, while we were here, that's what I'm asking you. Is, is the problem? Okay, so uh, uh, the only option that you guys want to consider is the three hundred and sixty-six thousand.
I'm not gonna speak for them, but I-
Your personal-
That's my personal opinion.
Okay.
And that was only for six months.
Things could have been worked out.
No, but that's for you.
That would be the six, that would be the six hundred and ninety thousand, or six hundred and seventy thousand for five.
Total fire department. Mark, you're, you're, I've, I've gotta ask you. We, we got the poll the other night, and apparently, we misunderstood what the poll said.
Well, we were told something different.
I know, it was just a misunderstanding, it was a misunderstanding. We're, no, it was a misunderstanding, I don't think it was a misunderstanding.
Okay.
Misunderstanding.
Turn him off.
So, we need to, to, I mean, this is the twenty-four, this is your plan, but we're following the law of what is allowable. Other towns are using stipends. We've reached out to other towns, they're doing, that our, our size is smaller, bigger enough, actually. There's towns bigger enough providing stipends to say, thank you for being willing to serve our town. It's not pay, we are not Orno, we are not Bangor, we are not Brewer, we are not Old Town. We are not a staffed, in-house ambulance service. I understand you can't go to Bangor, but when you put your name on the the schedule, you, you're aware of that. And there was a concern in when we just did, but it's two months of data, it doesn't give us much. We didn't have the seven point five FTEs for twenty-four seven ambulance. And that could be skewed, because they didn't have all the numbers of people who were there but not being paid. So, but if it's six point five for one month, and then seven point three for another month, we, we aren't at the FTEs to cover it, so maybe it's not sustainable. Even if we did pay it at the full amount, maybe this model just isn't sustainable.
Oh, it's absolutely not sustainable. It's a hundred percent not sustainable. Neither one of these is sustainable, the, the four sixteen an hour isn't sustainable, and neither is the fifteen dollars an hour, that's not sustainable either. That's why we voted to have a strategic planning committee to research other options that would save us money. It is long-term, it takes time. And like I've said before, if we came back and we had an answer, I mean, I think it was October or September that we started that strategic planning committee, and we first met in October, right, Stuart?
Yeah.
If, if we had an answer then, it would have been a horrible answer. It wouldn't have been a good answer.
Well, we're not even close to getting an answer.
Right.
When we put the data in here the other day, it's a thing ready.
In that case, um, if what you're saying, um, that even the three sixty-six is a Band-Aid, then it isn't at all affordable anywhere here.
Right.
That, in my opinion, I'm not speaking for the whole board, sorry. In my opinion, if the three sixty-six doesn't come close, then it's not at all affordable. And region is not gonna be affordable. No, not at all.
You don't, you don't know that. We don't know that. Because we haven't, we haven't, we have, it's, it's not cheap, right? Nothing's cheap, if you want-
But you put a number out there, nine hundred and six thousand.
That was, so-
You rambled that off.
So Jenny rambled that off.
No, no. That's go back to the video, actually.
And I agree with that.
Actually, that would be great, actually, everybody can go back to the video. Because you quoted that per capita, what it would be. If you can even go back to my notes, I think we're video.
One point two, one point seven.
So, getting back to where we should be.
We don't need to talk about that value right now, that's, that's a progress in part.
We can't, I mean, we can't, I threw that number out because of the number you gave me, I didn't pull it out of my ear. You gave me a number per capita, and I did it on my phone right there. So, in my estimation, if the three sixty-six isn't affordable, and, I mean, we're not, we're nowhere near being able to afford that, and if he's saying that the Band-Aid should get through, so, and, and you are saying, Jason, that you're one person. And I don't wanna put anybody on the spot, but there's only two other fire, uh, EMS people in the room that I'm aware of.
I'll speak for my son, he's on the roster. He's not, he's, he doesn't live here in town, right? But when, when he picks up shifts, he comes and he stays at my house, and he works a twelve-hour shift. Or a twenty-four. He's not gonna come here for fifty bucks an hour.
Go ahead, Matt, what were you gonna say?
Oh, no, I was just, I wanted to leave for it, and it's, Roseanne knows I was here, because I'm-
You're not even writing this.
Roseanne, in your, in your plan Monday, there was like a three-hour minimum, that's gone now, it's not here. What happened?
I, that, I, this is just a letter I typed up, I didn't mean to take anything out.
Well, it was in there. And we, you know, it was kind of chicken feed to us to, to throw out there for a three-hour minimum, it looked pretty good, now it's gone.
I, I think it's still in there, it might not be on the paper.
I didn't see it on your new one.
So, this isn't new, this is the letter, this is my letter. And then there's my proposal. So there's two different papers. I wrote the letter tonight, but here's still a proposal. This is my letter I gave.
So, okay, so we stick with the three-hour minimum, that, that turns like a paramedic into ninety bucks for that call, correct?
Yes.
Okay, what if he does a second call? Does he get his three-hour?
He's still getting his pay, yeah.
Okay, what if he does a third call? What's that gonna do to the, I'm just, I'm just thinking ahead here.
But not all of them are gonna be paramedics. Sometimes we're gonna have drivers in basic, sometimes we're gonna-
I never heard that once mentioned the other night. What if they do multiple calls? What's that gonna do, what's that gonna do for the budget? That, you'll, you'll, you're one ninety-three or whatever.
If we look at the data, if we look at the data,
Yeah.
Right now, we're doing one point three runs a day.
Yeah.
Sometimes it's three in one day.
Correct.
And then there's days you don't have any.
Sometimes it's none, that's true, yeah.
So-
I just wanted to run that by you, and then you hear that.
No, because we're, okay, I'm sorry, I can't remember the number, they don't have it in front of me. How many runs do we have in November, and how many runs do we-
This paper?
No, I have that.
It was thirty-seven, no, it was thirty-two and thirty-four, I believe.
And then some of them were non-transport, but you still guys got called out.
And you're still paying them for that.
And you're still paying them for that.
Correct.
We're not gonna not pay, we're, when you're on the, on a run, we're gonna pay you as many times as you go. We're not gonna, we're just saying, on the free time, which, I'm sorry, most of the time is on-call time, and most businesses, I've called and I've talked to people, they give just very little, they give a little, I mean, any job you have, if you're on call and once it's contracted,
Yeah.
you get minute amount of money to be saying, you can come in if you need me. You get minute amount of money to be saying, you can come in if you need me. So we're, we, this was just an option.
Hmm.
Doesn't look like it's gonna be agreed upon. But I, I, in good conscience, I can't go with the other one either because we're still in the same boat. Because if any, if the workload, they say, and tell me if I'm wrong, from the research I did, it's, you have to, yes, you have to have seven point five FTEs to do a twenty-four-seven. And then they say to also look at what you're, who is performing eighty percent of the workload. In our town, it's five people. We have five providers doing eighty percent of the workload in a month.
Maybe it's more than that. You might wanna, what's the math, Matt?
I think, that, that, that does sound a little low. I mean, you may be right, but.
I think it's more than five.
You got ten people that are covering.
Sitting right here.
You got ten people covering. But the top eighty percent, if you look at it, it's like twenty percent of the people doing this much work and five people are doing eighty percent.
Well, I think where the figure might be skewed is an FTE is an equivalent number. But for example, uh, last week, I'm ashamed to admit, um, I was here for seventy-two hours around my full-time job. So that makes me like an FTE and a half. So that might be where there's a little bit of, I guess, wiggling the numbers, so to speak.
That's what you're saying.
Yeah.
That, that's what you're saying. You did seventy-two hours.
Right.
So if you take, so if you look at it, if you broke your arm, if the five people that are covering the majority of your.
That won't be covered next.
If you broke your arm, got hurt, decided to quit, got called into your other job. If somebody gets pulled away. Those people, that eighty percent is gonna drop drastically and the other twenty percent are gonna have to make it up. And if they say, well, I can, I've got another job. If you, that workload is falling on that many people, that few of people, then there could also be trouble. So we just need to, it, it, it isn't sustainable. But we're trying to come up with a plan. And we, none of them have been met with anything. And it's, and right now, it's like, okay, we're going back to Mayo because that's all we're gonna have if we don't. And it's not up to us here. It's up, gonna be up to the people. But we have to at least, we told you guys back in October, we will come up with something before the March meeting. And that's what we have been tirelessly working at. And. I, I, I just don't even know what to say.
Well, I think first of all, your effort does not go unnoticed. So don't, don't think that that is it. The hard thing is looking at the arts, the recruitment and retention. Because obviously, with, with anything we've thrown around tonight, that, that, that's dicey. Um, the other thing, uh, just so you guys see a little bit of the fire department side, but the other thing, the fifteen dollars an hour for the on-call wage allows is for some of the administration of the service to be done. Like billing, like QI, like things along those lines. So for lack of a better term, we're being compensated to do those things outside the duties of calls right now. Check our trucks, for example. Um, so that's, that's a comfort, that's an assuredness we currently have that somehow, I think, might be struggled with, with a plan like you proposed. And like, for example, one ninety, one ninety, what was it?
What? Three?
One ninety-three.
What figure? I'm not sure what figure you're talking about.
The, the total for your proposal. What would it cost? One ninety-three?
One ninety-three.
One ninety-three, five, twenty-six?
One ninety-three, five, twenty-six. So that number, with what, the plan we're doing right now, I understand the affordability of it. I understand the issues around it. But it's a more fixed cost. Because as we stand currently, it costs us about twenty dollars in payroll to roll out ambulances. Above and beyond what we're already paying twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. My fear with this plan would be us absolutely blowing the budget simply based on the fact there are some administrative things that have to be done, but that's not my concern. But what if we average two calls a day? That would absolutely blow our budget with the payroll cost because we're paying so much more for that ambulance to respond.
We're staying in town. We're staying in town, right? That's what we decided thus far. We stay in town. We have not, ha, our numbers aren't as big.
I think some of that has to do with the turmoil that's going on right now, too. Uh, if you look at our numbers for January, we have forty-six, forty-seven in the book at this point. So, and unfortunately, things do go in streaks. Usually in the fall, we slow down a little bit, usually this time of year. It's not people falling on the scheme out, but whatever this, for you is in this time of year, usually is a little busier. And it, it, it may pick up, it may slow down. But one of my mentors told me that the best way to figure your call volume was a dartboard. And he was kidding. But the fact of the matter is, your call volume can swing four percent one way or another, less or more, in a year for absolutely no reason. So, a, a, as much as, you know, you may pray budgetary wise that it goes down, what if we see that four percent increase?
And that is where we don't have the data.
Right.
That's where we're dealing with, like, two months.
Yeah, walking blind, I get it.
Yeah.
I would, I would like to add though, you know, we're all kinda coming to assume that nobody's gonna like the four hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars for, for a five department EMS budget. And six hundred and seventy, I can't imagine making anybody even happier. Still a lot of money, no matter what.
It's.
That's a tremendous amount of money. And like I've said, and I'm not sure that people gonna, that's almost a half a million, three thousand, less than half a million. That's, that's gonna be a tough nut to swallow, knowing you add the hundred and ninety thousand on top of that.
And I'm definitely not gonna argue with it, it's a lot of money, but.
It's all, I mean, there's the numbers, I, we really had, had these numbers in front of us, so tonight, I mean, we had the kind of stuff. Actually got had data tonight, what it's gonna, what it could be, and that's scary.
It's like, it's like I told Jen a million years ago, and obviously you haven't seen my face much, which is probably comfort to most of you here. But I told you guys a long time ago that it's our job to advocate, you know, for the people of the town and for us as well. So we're always gonna ask. We understand we're gonna have to meet in the middle somewhere. We, we get that. But we're always going to ask for what it is that we think we need and what's gonna work. But we understand what that is compromised. We get that. Or at least I do. I'll speak for me, okay?
So.
I'm gonna keep it, yeah.
It's, it's still leaves us that. It's nowhere near affordable. So.
Hold on, I think that's clean, okay, we're gonna step back and go, that?
Yeah. All right.
Take them in.
Do we have any other public comment? Everybody commented out? Don't move on? All right, Fire Chief report.
The truck is here. It showed up yesterday and we, we put it together somewhat last night.
What do you think?
It, it'll do.
Okay.
It'll do.
Thank you.
Yep. It will do. It's, it's a good ultra.
Better than falling, sticking the eye, right?
Yep, yep. I'd also like to report that we have two new, brand-new paramedics. Jamie Seymour is now a licensed paramedic. And Katie Bragdon is now a licensed paramedic.
Congratulations.
And they, they work for this town also.
Yeah.
They have been, but they're new paramedics.
Good.
And also to the cost of somebody else, which is how much? Ooh, fifteen thousand?
Wow, I mean, where they're being paid for their time too, that's a twenty thousand dollar investment on the part of their.
Other departments pay for them, them licenses and they save us a lot of money. Good.
Town manager.
Uh, I don't have much other than what's in the, the written report. I would just highlight though, the budget timeline.
Why? Why you wanna highlight that?
So. Looking to have a warrant ready to be signed next week. Uh, with a public hearing set for the first meeting in March.
Yeah.
And then the town meeting on Tuesday, the eighteenth.
Perfect. I promise we will. All right, now, coming at you, CEO report. Or did you have something else?
Oh, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken. Just the email correspondence with Cox. He's the attorney over there.
Yeah, I saw that.
Recycling. And apparently, there's a bunch of hazardous waste there that he's been going back and forth on. With the DEP and various other people. They're all getting it removed. And he's been appointed by the court to be in charge of selling the property and cleaning it up and dealing with us and everything else. But it's a lot to, to do. And he doesn't know what, how the town wants to handle the selling of it and cleaning it up and, and kind of erasing it from our minds and stuff. So we kinda need to get a plan together and how we wanna do that. Cause I think he's, he's kinda hoping to have the town pay for the cleanup. And, and then.
Of course he is.
Get the money out of the selling of it and stuff like that, but.
And this is court, court appointments and the court selling it?
He was appointed, cause he was, back when this all started, it was very convoluted. But we had Josh Hardy, who's our attorney, who was dealing with them, to get it cleaned up. But then they were all suing each other at the same time. So they wanted to get that cleaned up, or get that all figured out before we could figure out who we're actually dealing with. And that's been straightened up now. So now, apparently, everything's just gonna, from court order, has to be eliminated and sold off and stuff like that. So now it's on Charlie Cox to get that sold off and have all the debt squared away and squared away to the town and stuff like that. And now apparently, hazardous waste, so.
So they want us to pay for hazardous waste removal? And then we get paid back as a sale?
Hopefully, that's something that's been thrown out there, yeah.
See, that, that could be big, big dollars.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. I, I know that. And that's why I, I think it's better off to sell it for next to nothing and have people buy it, deal with it. And then we go look at it after the fact and say, yeah, you guys are good with it. Cause that would not be money enough to make our own money and have to wish to get back.
Yeah, that's nuts.
It's my thing, it's like.
That's one, that's one, that's one of the unended things to walk right there.
That, and that's your recommendation, and I.
I, that's what I recommend, cause while I agree, pony up our money, we'd, we have nothing to decide how to get cleaned up. Should've been taken care of.
It could be years for us to untill.
Absolutely.
You want motion on that?
Um, I believe that I would like a motion.
I'll make a motion and then we go with CEO's recommendation and not fund the cleanup and the cleanup on the place. Um, that probably being mentioned, the question. What's the math, I don't even know.
And do you need? You're just gonna call them, write them a letter, all that? Or do you need more from us on that? Because, go ahead.
I think that's enough. I, I don't, we might even have Josh communicate that.
Yeah, I'd recommend that also.
Yes.
Because what attorney do, attorney, you don't catch us.
I second that. So, do you have an addition?
Well, add in that you have been to, been to, to go through our attorney.
Yes. Any other discussion on that? Yeah, just give him a minute, he's finishing up. I wanna make sure you, you have discussion. Just do your motion and I'll do it. I second. All in favor?
Some good one has to bet it.
Right. Is that all you have? Can you visit?
Well, we actually got a memo from, uh, the state saying that, and they're still trying to figure out exactly how it, exactly what happened. But we, uh, apparently, all of us, PEL is the state of Maine, have to start enforcing move-back rules. Uh, starting April, and then the change in the code in twenty-twenty-one. So if that is the case, then there's gonna be a lot of changes that we'll have to make.
Not, not really. I checked with the state administrator yesterday, who's in class in Groh. The new back rules have always been in place, but you still have to be in Minnesota, over four thousand people to enforce them in town. The rules have always been there, and a lot.
Right, right, but the way they, they, they worded that letter, and then I was looking at the, the other stuff on the state, the, the, the way they scratched out the four thousand population part and then just added across the state. So that's why I'm unsure about all that so far.
So we're gonna keep our eyes open on it.
I, I, I talked to the guys in charge, and in fact, they're starting a new department, uh, in July. We're, we're getting out, we're getting what the state department's office again, to do that. Well, but anyway, I asked about that yesterday, he was up there and I went to try and do Groh and, so I asked about that and he says, no, that isn't gonna change. I mean, if you've been there, you've been right. And I've been watching somebody get sued by doing bad jobs. And that would solve a lot of problems, but we've done it yet.
Are they gonna send anything out to clarify that for people or, you know?
I'm in another main chapter, I'm the president, so I'll keep it informed.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, do we wanna move to unfinished business and new business? So Adam can have some supper.
Um.
What do you wanna do? We, we can go on with unfinished business?
Yeah, I think really the, the junkyard update was, we tend to roll that all into one, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right, very good. So unfinished business, one, two, three, five, budget.
So as of last night, uh, got pretty clear direction on everything other than EMS. Next big question is, how do you want the warrant drafted? On the back of the town manager's report, there's kind of an overview of different formulas for writing the warrant. Broadly worded, narrowly worded, capped or uncapped.
All of the above.
So I think my recommendation and what's been done more recently is generally broadly worded and capped.
How'd you do in school, Dick?
I like that. You did very well.
Okay, English was not my highs and lows, so you know, so. I prefer that to you, absolutely.
Yeah, I would agree with that. Was it the other day in the book?
What was the last year?
On the back of the town manager's. Yeah, I like that broadly and capped. What do you think? Capped. The, the amount may be decreased, but not increased.
Yeah. All right, so if there's a general consensus on that, that's what I'll do. Uh, other question is, how many articles do you want?
Thirty-two and a half.
Do you? I know the last couple of years, Stephen, put on pretty much everything into a single article.
Yeah, and I would, I, I think from the public's point of view, I think they would like to see them.
Separate?
Separate a little bit. We don't need to separate them like we used to.
Right.
We don't need a hundred and seventy-seven. But I think we separate them a little.
Yeah, well, maybe the roads are separate line and.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
Just because I, I, a lot of people were like, oh, we're voting on this one thing and I can't see, even though it was all there. But it, then it's hard to digest the entire.
Yeah.
So if we could separate it a little bit at your discretion.
Okay.
I think it was put over by, like, the patents or something, presented, separated down through.
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess, from my perspective, all that leaves is a decision on what you put, put in for EMS, okay?
All right, so, um, discussion on that.
I think we're gonna have to give them choices. And then we're gonna have to see their choices and.
And the cost.
And the cost, and, and if it's the one extreme or the other.
So which, um.
Because at this point, I do not feel I can have confidence that our EMS will support anything but the one they propose. Because of the pay, they, they, they need to have that fifteen dollars an hour to. But I'm still concerned that if we have ten people doing it, it will still be single.
All right, so.
By the way, we'll have a year's worth of data.
So that option is the three hundred and sixty-six nine.
But I think we also need to put it back to that we will put it out to, we can just stick with Mayo Regional being our.
This is from the other.
The other option is, and whether it would happen or not, because I know the day of volunteerism is sadly past us. We could always say, uh, Mayo primary and then secondary could be the town two nineteen. Mayo primary, and then secondary could be eight, the town two nineteen.
On common places.
Uh, yeah.
Alright, so.
That doesn't mean they'll come, that just means that that's an option.
So you're, we're gonna call option one, um, the option that, um, they gave us, which is the three hundred and sixty-six thousand nine oh two. Um, I'm going to say Roseanne's option is middle.
I don't know if our, that option will work, because if EMS is telling us they will not do it, we do not have the people to do it.
But we don't have the entire EMS here.
Um, if that gets voted in, though. Well, I don't have, Andy, right?
I don't either.
Well, that's what I'm saying, the only option that they're thinking, so we only have two options. We only have their big one, and our, no, nothing. That's all we have.
Why can't, maybe some people like that option.
But the thing is, if the EMS will not work it, it's not sustainable, it's not reliable, because we will not have the people to put in the seats. They've made their stand. And I can respect them for it, because they feel that that's what they have to do, but they're, they're, that's it. We, we're gonna have to come up with something, and we've got a year to do it.
So in the meantime, they're gonna.
So all or nothing?
Push it, yeah.
That's the only, the only two options, but they are.
So why can't we put their option with Mayo? That they're not, not across.
We can.
That's the other.
That's the other option.
Only two options.
I know.
All or nothing.
I, I, I'm disappointed that they haven't worked there.
So, is, anybody else have a different opinion?
Maybe they should. The other one that we, one of the other options we did have was, um, covering, having our team cover during the day for forty hours.
But they didn't like that one either.
Well, that was one of the ones that they said, we had a couple that were three fours last night, correct?
True, true.
The, the survey?
On the survey, that option did give, um, there was six at level one, and then two at level two, and then two at level four.
We're trying to give options to the community, and I'm, I'm sustainable, reliable, and affordable, and we're not there, we're just not there.
So you're gonna put two or three options on the warrant?
We're, we're gonna discuss it.
And if you vote, the high vote gets it?
Um, so, what, what is, do we wanna put a middle option? Well, if we did the forty hours, then if they say, no, we don't wanna do it, we can hire, uh, we can hire a provider for those forty hours. Cause if the town.
But we still need a driver. We need two.
Which one, they told me, which other option, which town was it?
Um, the option that we're talking about is the forty hours, um, eight hours a day during the week. And that one is forty hours a minute. Jacob put, um, different, this is option three, with forty hours plus two hundred, three hour cost. So, but depending on if our fire department isn't going to do it, um, we could possibly rent a provider like Caramel does, and it would be cheaper than that.
If we could, could set that up.
We'd still have to be able to find a provider.
Yeah.
Which big is that, two seventeen?
Yeah. And, um, and then it would be.
It's still not gonna be twenty-four seven care. I mean, it will, because, potentially, because it may go has to cover at night. If they can't come, then it turns out to somebody else, but it's not gonna be that guaranteed twenty-four seven.
Um, so if I can offer downside to that, if we can't get a provider, we're gonna have the tax increase without the benefit.
They love that place.
Always.
Um, it's gonna ultimately be up to the people. If, if they want, if they, if they're comfortable with the, the, the option one, and say, you know, we'll take the chance of maybe not having twenty-four, you know, nothing sustainable right here in town. We'll take our chances with Mayo, or Levant, or whatever.
But my concern is, even the same as Jacob's downside, we could do this three hundred and sixty-six thousand, and then we burnt them out, and then they can't do it. And then we still have to rely on Mayo, with a two and a half mil rate up increase. So, and we're still looking at having to be covered by Mayo.
So that three sixty-seven is two point.
Three sixty-six, I know.
Three sixty, that's gonna be a.
Well, it would be somewhere around two, it, you know, we don't have all the other revenue numbers.
Right.
If you base it on twenty twenty-four, it'd be around two.
But, but if you combine the fire department and that?
Right, it would be an increase of two, if, I don't have a calculator, but, uh, I mean, if you put the whole fire department in, it's probably.
Three?
Yeah, three and a half.
I thought you said three and a half, yeah.
Yeah.
Three and a half now.
Three and a half now.
Too much.
But that's not an increase, that's. That's the total taxes.
Right, um, alright, so, where do you guys wanna go with this? You wanna go just all or nothing? Do you, I, I.
Really?
We have to put the, we have to put them, I mean.
We've got the Northern Light, which is basically, if, they, you know, least expensive currently, no cost of town, ambulance to respond from Dover and Dexter, no current personnel or equipment required, no per capita charge expected in two thousand twenty-five.
So, I, I.
Is there any way to get a poll on the new one?
I, I, I just say.
It's gotta kinda be all or nothing.
Go ahead.
I would suggest, well, so I don't know that I would put the nothing, I, I would look at doing sixty or seventy thousand dollars, just so that there's some money available if we can work something out with Northern Light.
True, because they're coming in, and then they, that's true, if we budget.
If the fifty thousand dollars, they put an ambulance back in here.
Right, right.
That might be the, the way to do it.
That, right, we won't do all or nothing, we'll do all, something, and then nothing.
I mean, nothing would be the default if people just vote no on everything.
That's true, so if we just gave two options, if we give two options on the warrant, and we have a paper ballot, a paper that they do, we have to vote down number one to go to number two?
Yes.
Okay, so we vote down number one, and then we pass out papers again, and we have to vote up or down that one. And if that one doesn't go either, and that's a no vote, then we do the nothing. So if we do their three sixty-six nine oh two, or we do a budget of seventy-five thousand, hoping we get Mayo back in here.
Why can, why can't it be the two listed, number one, number two, whatever? And the person we write on a piece of paper, they want number one, number two, in the vote? Why wouldn't that work?
I mean, it potentially could, but it's not, there's still, that warrant has a piece that has to be voted up or down.
Yeah, everything's gonna have an up or down.
You gotta get rid of an article before you go to a warrant, you can't do that.
So, um, we could do, we could put in the three sixty-six nine oh two, and we could put in, like, um, seventy-five, or, um.
Seventy, seventy-five thousand for other.
Levant is fifty-seven thousand that they have for Mayo, according to their budget. So if we round it up from there, and we put that in as the second one, that way, um, we'd have money available, we wouldn't be just.
Right.
We do something other than nothing.
So the first time they vote on option one, it's either yes or no.
Yep, they either vote yes.
Count all those?
Yep, and we have to count all those, and then up or down. And if they vote it up, then we don't need to move on to the second one, if they vote it up. So if three sixty-six nine oh two passes, we don't have to move on to the two. If it doesn't pass, and they vote it down, then we move on to two.
Yeah, and so what's the final number on two, seventy, seventy-five?
Chris, what do you think? That number, what number should we budget? What do you think?
Should we hire something out?
You think seventy-five, what's your?
I'd say seven, seventy-five thousand.
The thing is, though, then, how many seconds, that isn't twenty-four seven, cause at night Carmel has.
Their own people.
Right.
They volunteer.
So they would have no evening coverage.
And then they get paid if they go on call.
In the evening, we would have.
Mayo, Mayo time, yeah. So.
If we could get Mayo back under the previous contract.
But it's still not twenty-four seven.
Well, the ambulance is there twenty-two, twenty-seven.
We're budgeting.
I mean.
Right.
Right now, they're covering twenty-four seven.
You know, I mean, we tried a driver.
But at least that money would be budgeted, so that we, if, rather than all or nothing, right.
Well, then, if that's the case, if we were to have a driver, the driver would be, I mean, the prior driver that we had, when we had Mayo here, in the eve, it was thirty thousand, right, for the year?
That's why we have to budget money in case.
I know, but I'm saying.
It, it was around seventy, but the, uh, the revenue made the net around thirty, thirty-five.
You're seventy-five.
Would that be, be low, though, because if the driver alone's gonna cost us that much?
With that, we, we don't have any revenue. We won't have revenue.
Well.
With that up.
I mean, we could still, you know, potentially get to where, if we were supplying a driver, we could get some money for trips out of town.
Alright, so the seventy-five would take.
But that doesn't include the budget?
Yeah, it does.
That?
Alright, so that, is that, that'll cover, right, seventy-five, it covers.
Would have covered what we were doing before.
Alright.
So.
Yeah, alright, is that, any more discussion on that one? You, you think no, or yeah?
I just don't know.
We don't, we're not in that territory yet.
We are, and we're in a territory.
I know that.
We might have to do rock paper scissors, but we have to make a decision tonight, so.
I'd say seventy-five.
Alright, so, we'll go with option one at the three sixty-six nine oh two, and option two, seventy-five, um, because Mayo is coming back to meet with us anyway, so, and then that way, um.
Well, then, wouldn't, if that's the case, why wouldn't we just go ahead and look, and do the one thirty-five, that's the, the third option? And then that way, we would be, I mean, that, we may not follow the third option, but if we follow the money of the third option, then that, then we're covered.
Um.
Oh, was that one sixty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
This one's not.
Trying to give the middle of the road, well, I mean, it'd still be middle of the road, it'd still be half, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
So why not give them the middle of the road? How are we gonna cover it, though? What are we gonna do?
Well, we aren't, we aren't, if they go to the three sixty-seven, we're not gonna cover that money, so we gotta give options, so, I mean, we, we, if we give a, 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 a low, medium, high, I mean, it gives, it gives the people a chance to look at it.
Which one is that, Roseanne?
Um, Northern Light Mail plus contracted provider in current forty hours. Not saying we follow that, but at least that amount of money.
Um, is that one the original option, right? Under the original?
Yes, yes. And that one was the one thirty-five, yes, that's the one she's talking about right there.
The, uh, alright, so, and that one, what's the downfall on those? Mr. DeBegana?
Just that there's no one willing to do it, it's.
Which is the same on all of the options.
Well, I mean, I think, for the three sixty-six, people said they'll do that. So, I mean, I think that's the only, only guarantee.
Well, but I'm looking at, like, we're not gonna necessarily follow this, saying we rewrite this, and we say, we'll have a provider for the forty, and then,
Yeah.
then Northern Light will cover it at night.
I mean, if we, yeah.
I mean, or we can say, if, if, if any of our EMS wants to, we'll, we'll pay them for coming, like Carmel is. Or is it Levant? I've got them all confused.
Carmel. Cause Levant is contracted with Northern Light.
Very good.
Not contracted, they're partnership, like, we, they're same as we are.
Right. Except their ambulance isn't there, just the provider, correct?
Right, alright, so, number one, we have that option. Um, and if we go around the room, which option would you like to go with it?
What, 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 what was it?
What I need to know is each one of you.
Alright, three sixty-six?
Right, we're, we're gonna go with that one, cause we know that one, we still don't know if it's gonna be sustainable.
No.
But that's the side point, at this point.
Right. And.
So what's your question?
I wanna know what other option you want. She, we're talking all, all different things, so I'm wondering, I, I need a read on what each one of us wants for that second option.
Well, the middle, the middle ground.
Give them a small option.
Well, we are gonna give them a small option.
Well, why are we picking an option if we're not gonna cover it?
Are you gonna meet with Mayo before telling me?
We're meeting with Mayo, see if they provide us a little provider.
Hope so. Yeah, I, I. Now, after that meeting, you could make a change.
So, um, what is your read, um?
I took a few years now, I haven't.
I know, I know. So, the, the middle, the middle option, we're, we're doing, the three sixty-six is all, and then the nothing is, um, what these two options get voted down, go back to, Mayo covers us.
Is that the seventy-five?
No, no, the Mayo covering us is zero, because.
Oh, zero, okay.
Cause they.
It's like them coming right now.
Right, and like they did all of Novem, all of October, and like, all October, they covered us primarily, they, they were the only one. So, the, if, the, if these two options are voted down, that's what we're looking at, Mayo will cover us from Dexter or Dover, or Bangor.
Okay.
So that's only if they pay, okay.
That's the zero.
Alright.
So, I'm, I'm looking for a middle option, because the zero option is if these two get voted down. So what do you guys want for a middle option?
What was the seventy-five we were talking about?
We were talking if we could get Mayo back in our station.
Basically, it gives you some money to have options.
Yeah.
Because if we don't budget for anything, and they vote everything down, we can't even have our guys and girls cover, cause we have no money budgeted for them. If they vote the three sixty-six nine oh six down, we have no money budgeted, we can't, we can't do anything.
Okay, let's go with.
So if we don't have that seventy-five, i- if we don't have a middle option, and we don't have money budgeted, if we go in the town meeting and they say, no way, we're not doing three hundred and sixty-six, then the only option we have is to have somebody else cover, I said no cost, cause we don't have any money budgeted. And if we, if we budgeted the seventy-five at least, then at least, you know, our guys and girls, if they were there and wanted to cover, we could pay them.
Seventy-five, take four one.
You, what are you thinking, Roseanne?
I just don't think that's enough.
What are you thinking, we should budget? You want the one thirty-five as a budget? And, and we can call it whatever we want, we can call it.
They can't rub a hook in.
We can, I'm, I'm thinking, I'm trying to, like.
I mean, if you think that's, if we think what you need, I'll, I'll go along with you, I mean, I'm just doing something, because I was doing anything.
Um, what? In your opinion, what is a good medium number we could do this without?
Bankrupt, yeah.
Well, without tipping us over that.
Abyss.
Right, we're giving something we could have, so that in case of emergency, but not something that's gonna raise a tack, tax rate, and then we have it there, but we don't.
Uh.
Just to put you on the spot, cause that's what I do.
Yeah.
In an argument, you know.
So is the seventy-five, you think, or will the one thirty-five, um, the one thirty-five feels like, that it would tip the, the rate? So is the seventy-five, you think, or will the one thirty-five, um, the one thirty-five feels like that it would tip the, the rate, I should say? Um, but still won't get us what we need, I guess, that's my...
Well, how much middle rate?
But I don't know if seventy-five is going to get us what we need, so...
Or not going to get, we're getting what we're... Right now, we're in a precarious place, because we don't have reliability and sustainability. We have people who, we have ten people who are willing to come and do the best they can, but if one of them gets hurt, or injured, or quits, it's, it's going, it's going, you know, it's going to be hard. And they told us, you know, it, it, this is a Band-Aid, it, it is a Band-Aid.
That's okay, now you're figuring out, now you're figuring out the number.
Yeah.
So I would say, the Northern Light Mail plus contracted provider in current for forty hours a week. I would say do the one sixty.
Do one sixty for the medium?
It's middle of the road, it's half of what the other one is.
Can you give an idea?
How about if you, how about we use the one that you came up with for that option? Because we, because if they don't come and they don't do it, we might not go and do that any less.
But we can't keep doing that, shall we, in all night long? I mean, I know, I hear you saying...
So what's the number, you say one sixty? Chris?
What do you say? If that's what she says, this town takes to sustain it, then...
It's not going to sustain it, it's just...
Well, if you invest, you, you can't, can't waste all night long, though.
No, but it would at least give us a contracted person.
Okay. One sixty, you're going to do the main, one sixty?
You start with a figure, you can always go to a special town meeting when that runs up.
Yes, we know.
Down the road.
Um, go ahead.
I have one, you're asking how much is it going to increase the mail rate?
Yeah.
Over last year? I mean, last year, it was around seventy-five, so if you double that, off, off the top of my head, probably point three, point four, but I, I'm not super confident in that.
That, well, but I'm still, you do math better than I do. So, that gives me, I forgot that last year, that it was right at seventy-five, that I was adding the whole amount, so you're right. That would be, she's right.
Can we do it with your hands, though?
Absolutely.
Is this the third one?
Number two.
This is number two, we're only giving two options.
Okay.
Because...
That's what I'm going to go to. We're going, we're going to be doing a lot of work within the next week to try to get this all pulled together before we have to put it, sign it, sign it.
All right, so, is one sixty the number for you? One, that's the middle? All right, the nothing, the, the mail, nothing, that's if both of these options get voted down. We go into town meeting and they say, no on one, no on two. So then, the option for zero is, is that.
Redominant.
Right, if they vote them both down, then it's zero, and then mail covers us from Bangor, Dexter, and Dover.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so, option one is the three sixty-six nine oh two. Option two is we're going to budget one hundred and sixty thousand dollars, um, in an attempt to hire a provider...
For forty hours.
For forty hours, with coverage at night and weekends by mail.
Or if, if our, if somebody hears available on call, they can take it and repay them, but...
We're not going to put that in the article, right?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to get it between my fingers. No, I want you to say every one of these words. All right, so, is that good, one sixty? That's where we want to be at? All right, everybody? We're all in agreement? Okay.
There's still...
Are you in agreement? No.
Is there going to be any municipal officer recommendation?
Um, the municipal officers, I'm going to recommend that they vote them both down.
No, I, I mean, at this point, it's going to add to the people, because I...
Yeah, but we, we need to make a recommendation, am I right?
I think, I think we can do it without recommendation.
I think we can do it.
I say we say without recommendation, and then they...
And, and all honesty, there'll be no budget committee recommendation, because neither one of these options were recommended by the budget committee.
Right.
So I would say no on both, that it won't have a budget committee recommendation, it won't have a board recommendation.
If there was a recommendation, we'd say no.
I, no, it's, I don't know.
We can write that down, Charlie said.
Yeah, that's what we're going to say, right?
Okay, good.
All right, now!
Getting on.
I'm happy with it, but it's done.
All right.
Okay? Very good, moving on. Ever honored.
Jenny, is the town going to vote on that?
What's that?
I said, is the town going to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Those two options. No, two.
Well, two, if it's for two of them, then the third is...
Correct, correct, correct. Can I, can I ask one more question? I want to ask, on the three sixty-six, what does the five, what do the five, the EMS people get paid?
Fifteen, twenty?
Fifteen.
And the fifteen for being on call?
Yeah.
So it's like two hundred and forty dollars a day?
Well, it's seven hundred and twenty total, just in call pay, yes, right.
For a two-forty a person, half a day.
It's not, it's not two-forty, it's, it's one-forty a person for a twelve-hour shift.
All right, new business, appointment of code enforcement officer, do you have anybody in mind? Wait, you want option one too?
He's our only one.
I'll give you an option, he says.
I admitted code enforcement officer on the last meeting's form, so, uh, that's the reappoint Adam Code Enforcement.
I'm in commotion, we do.
I second that. What day's your rookie comment? Monday, Thursday. Wait, no, we have any, I want to do it all. New rookie, yes. You must have good one. Yeah.
We already did.
Well, we, we should go down and, and, uh...
Jenny, can we vote? Can we vote on that?
Yeah. I've made a motion.
I second that. Any discussion?
Six. The motion is to...
Yes, yeah, option one. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right, town report.
Uh, yeah, so the office staff is working on that. Did you want to do a dedication this year?
Yes, but we haven't discussed it, who we want to put in.
Okay, so we don't do the decision tonight?
That's an idea, okay, go down.
Good.
So we'll put that on the agenda for next time.
That is absolutely, yes. We absolutely do. Can we table a town report dedication?
I'm making a motion with table dedication to the town board.
I second that. Any discussion?
Except Charlie already made the motion, so I just think so.
One hundred percent, that's what I was thinking too.
Yeah.
I'm sick because I'm here, you can read my mind. Do you want to support Charlie?
Yeah.
Would you like to support Charlie?
Every day.
All in favor? I did, I discussed it. All right, EMS strategic planning.
So I think this was, was this a board discussion?
No. No, just an update, usually, because, I mean, basically, I go through the meetings and...
All right, I, I asked, I saw it on the agenda today, I called Jacob, Jacob said Charlene wanted it on the agenda, nobody talked to me about it before today, so...
Well, that's why I'm looking at it, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I thought it was on the...
I did, because I, I wanted to know, uh, when we talked about a committee, we, we, I as a board member, thought it was going to be just people from Corinth. So, it never came back to the board as to who to involve, or include, in this regional, which I think the board should have some say in, who's picked, not just picked by... So we appointed him.
Right, but...
And then he was going to appoint the people, unfortunately, he did. But it never came back to, uh, what towns were going to be included. I just thought that we should have some info, or maybe ask us, or whatever. That was my concern.
So the, so the group, the group right, right now, that's where we're working together, is, uh, Corinth, Glenburn, and Kanduskeg. And the reasoning for that is because when the county offered the consultant in the beginning, over the summer, I think it was, they, they offered the services of their consultant. We were, we were a town that responded to that query, Kanduskeg and Glenburn also responded to that query. We've been, we've been meeting, uh, we've met, uh, four, four times now?
Yeah.
And, uh, we'll meet again on February fifth. The, um, the meetings are open, if anybody would like to come, feel free to come. The, um, we talked to the county commissioner, Scott Atkins, and he had asked, like, hey, have you spoken to Charleston? And we said, hey, we'll invite him, and we went back to the group and discussed it as a group, and said, how does everybody feel about inviting other communities into this discussion? And on the advice of the consultant, we said, let's keep it, and the group decided on this, let's keep it, these three communities, because we're actually working really well together, these three communities, trying to, we, we have a shared vision of what the end goal is for it, and we're, we're working towards that, towards that vision. And we met, I met yesterday with the county administrator and the consultant at the, at the firehouse, uh, to talk about applying for a, a grant that has funds available, that I've discussed with you guys over the summer multiple times, uh, to help fund the strategic planning, so that's going to help offset the costs that the county is contributing to the consultant.
Is that the five-year one?
No, no, the, this is the two hundred thousand dollar, um, one-time lapsing funds that the state of, state of Maine Department of EMS is offering for services to do community planning, so...
Does that answer your question?
Yes, oh. Well, I guess, my question is, so, okay, right now, you're, you're, you're planning the vision, but when it comes down to the actual towns, it will be volatile, will more towns be added?
So the, the, right now, right now, the goal is to get to the end line with these three communities, and to leave, leave it structured, so that we can bring more communities in, when they, when they see how, how it's going, and if it's going well, to bring more communities in.
Because then that would break down the cost, right? As more communities come in. It will be set up basically like a school system, it will be a district.
Yep, quasi-municipal entity.
But we, the town would no longer have a say.
Nope, there'll be a board.
There'll be a board, but that board, it'll be like the school board, right?
Will it be a board of members appointed from the community?
The building, that was my own question. We don't lose ownership of the building, but we lose ownership of the equipment.
So, so that is a, that is a model that is, that happened, right? So, uh, Central Maine Highland Fire District One is Howland and seven other communities, uh, in northern Penobscot County, that followed that plan, and they did that. They said, when you join into the district, uh, the quasi-municipal entity that they formed takes all, gets all the equipment. They don't get the buildings, they don't get the real estate, they get the equipment. And the reason they did that is because, you know, some of the communities are different sized, and so if, if one of the larger communities says, hey, no, we don't want to do this anymore, and in this situation, Glenburn is the larger community, right?
But they don't have the most equipment.
Yes, they do, they have more equipment than us.
And the other thing that Howland has with that is they have a twenty-one mil rate. They have, they have a twenty-one mil rate with that regionalization too.
Understood, understood, but this is rocking towards, I mean, far as my, my take on it, we're rocking towards a goal. Uh, I don't see them kind of, I don't know, we really, there's so much information lacking. Corinth was the most complete, Glenburn's wasn't close to being complete, Kanduskeg wasn't, but there again, if you add in Bradford and Hudson and Thompson, that would shrink the overall rate for any one given town. And, but then, I, I almost had a head attack, and I said, that's kind of like a school district, and the guy said, well, kind of, so, and I said, that's not a good thing to say to me.
And, and it is, because we no longer have any negotiations, they send us a bill, we pay it, there's no negotiation, there's no...
That's a bad idea. Well, it may be a bad idea, John, but it's one way, just...
That's going to be something the town's going to vote on again.
It's something the town has to vote on, but just so you know, a lot, a lot of funding is going to dry up, I mean, a lot of, a lot of, like, the stuff goes EMS, that's going to go to quasi-municipal, because they're going to help more departments than just one. So, just like, there's a lot of things that are available now that everybody can have, but we've been told that down the road, and maybe ten years down the road, but that, a lot of the funding won't be available anymore.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I'm just, I was just wondering, you know, more, and eventually, it can broaden, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
Help the tax burden.
Yep.
Because if it is, if it is going to be like a school district, like, right now, we have no say in the school, absolutely none. We have no say, it's just, here's your bill, and this is what you have to pay for your portion, and that's just kind of, you know, we're having a hard enough time with this. So it's just, it's something to think about, right?
And the other side of that is we need to apply a call, everybody's going to...
So we're going to move on to review and sign more.
Make them all...
Three and four.
Make them all set up, uh, one out of three, four.
All undiscussed? All in favor? All right, road commissioner information.
I don't have anything.
I do, actually.
There is a bad pothole out on Red Hill that I saw today, um, and it's, if you turn off in Beans Mill and head towards, um, West Corinth, I don't know, say it's like eight of a mile down there.
By the field?
On the, yeah, it's before the field.
On the right hand side?
It's on, yes. If you're going down, no, if you're coming off Beans Mill, it's on the left-hand side.
Teddy shop side?
Yes, Teddy shop side, I forgot about that, sorry. I didn't put it in my phone to remind me.
And Jason took great care of that problem by the coaster.
Yeah.
We haven't lost any small cars in Vegas.
Well, I sent them to a book, and she's, yeah, I've, I've already called them two months ago, I guess they didn't do very good away.
All right, municipal officer input, does anybody have anything? Have we have, uh, inputted enough?
No, I can just say the comprehensive thing we're working on, the surveys, we're on our fourth draft, so be looking for it in the mail, eventually, there'll be a survey, uh, the survey won't be in the mail, but the notice of the survey will be in the mail, um, local businesses and the newspapers, so...
Give us an example of one of the questions you're going to ask.
I can't right now, because we're on our fourth one.
I know, that's why I said it.
I have it right here for you.
Well, I'm still peeking.
Hey, I, I sent mine back early.
I can see your answers to it.
Of course you can, I, I knew that, again, I was looking over both shoulders.
All right, I think that is all we have, and then we have an executive session for personnel issues.
Thank you all for coming, by the way.
One R M R S A four oh five.
Four oh, six A.
Six A. I said it, I said it, seven thirty-one.